Rob, would you lead us some pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor?
Father God, we come to you today humbly in the mighty name of Jesus, God, asking for your help, Lord, today. Lord, not just today, but throughout this year, Father God. Lord, we want to bring Counselor Johnson to your throne tonight, God, and we want to lift him up in prayer, Lord. We ask that you will provide all the help necessary, Lord. We ask for the doctors and the nurses and and the everybody, Lord, to be appointed by your hand, Lord, to, for his recovery, Father God. We plead the blood of Jesus over his life, Lord, and his spirit, God, and his heart. God, we ask for your protection over his life. We send angels to minister to him, Father God. Lord, we ask for your direction tonight, Lord. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Here.
Mayor Protem Sibela?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Counselor Johnson will not be present this evening, and a quorum is declared.
Okay, modifications to agenda?
Yes, Mayor, there is modifications to the agenda. If you could please remove F1 and remove G1B.
Need motion, Paul?
Yes.
I would move to approve the modifications to agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the modifications to the agenda, removing 1F and G1B. Is there any discussion? Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sibela?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to modify the agenda, removing F1 and removing G1B.
Okay, approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, review and approval of accounts payable.
Move to accept consent agenda and minutes of previous meeting and accounts.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sibela?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, go to citizen comments and special presentations. Schedule appearances in order to be included in this portion of the agenda have to file an appropriate form with the city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Economic impact of Montevista Crane Festival results from the twenty twenty visitor survey.
I have a copy of the survey. Is it okay if I pass out? So, my name is Jenny Neering, and I am a co-chair Crane Fest planner with Deb Callahan, who's also here. And in March of twenty twenty, during Crane Fest, prior to when the world changed with COVID, we were lucky enough to conduct this survey. So the data I'm presenting is economic impact of Crane Festival during a normal time period when visitors can freely come and travel and stay. So, this effort was done in coordination with Colorado Open Lands, the Crane Fest Committee, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the Friends of the Refugees. Colorado Open Lands is a land trust, and they had an intern named Max Cioppa, who was working on a project called Grains for Cranes. And we partnered with C.O.L. and Max, and they submitted a Colorado Water Conservation Board grant for water education, and that was the funding source for this effort. It included a survey, this economic survey, as well as the production of a small, a short video on the importance of water agriculture to cranes in the San Luis Valley. And I have given Nita this full report, and she could forward it to you, and I'll also email her the YouTube link so you can see the video. Many of you may have already seen the video. We showed it at our twenty twenty Crane Fest, and we showed it again this year on our online Crane Festival. So, and this effort was modeled off of a crane, economic crane impact survey in Nebraska. So that was our model for conducting this, and you have the survey, the paper survey that visitors to the refuges and visitors to Montevista in March of twenty twenty filled out. So just a little background on the cranes and why they come to the San Luis Valley. The entire population of the Rocky Mountain, population of the Greater San Hill Crane, comes through Montevista, comes through the San Luis Valley. The blue blobs on this map are the breeding ranges, and this is, there's approximately twenty-five thousand birds in this population, and they breed in what's called the Greater Yellowstone area. So it's Yellowstone, as you know, kind of in this corner of Wyoming and Montana. And all these blue blobs represent their breeding grounds. The yellow blobs at the bottom here and down into Mexico, all along the Lower Rio Grande, represent their wintering grounds. They primarily winter at the Bosque de la Pechay National Wildlife Refuge, which is in Socorro, New Mexico, about two hours south of Albuquerque. And I just realized I meant to take this off, and I'm, so I'll take it off. Anyway, so twenty thousand, twenty to twenty-five thousand cranes come through our region, and this red bullseye shows you how important our valley is. It's a total bottleneck for the movement of these birds. And these black lines are actually from GPS data of individual cranes and the routes they take. So we're very fortunate that the cranes are so very reliant on us, on their migration. And a lot of people dismiss the value of migration habitat. You have your wintering grounds and your breeding grounds. But if you can't effectively get between those two locations, if the resources that you need, the food, water, and shelter that you need to make those lone flights aren't in place, then the location of your breeding or your wintering, or how well you're able to breed are kind of irrelevant. So migration stopover habitat is really important. So this survey had two parts. It was the paper survey that I gave to you. And there's also those pneumatic vehicle counters, those traffic counters. We had those set up in locations around the refuge. The pneumatic vehicle counters were set up for sixty days, so you could capture the number of cars in the area with cranes and without cranes. And the vehicle or the survey time period was approximately thirty days. It was cut short just a bit because of COVID. But, you know, we think of Crane Festival as a weekend in March, but the reality is, is that the cranes are here for about six weeks, and they're here in peak numbers for about three weeks. So anyone who enjoys coming to the valley to see cranes knows that you can come the weekend before or after Crane Festival and have as good and sometimes even better viewing. If you're not a fan of large crowds, then you can come, you can skip Crane Festival and still come down and have, you know, spectacular viewing opportunities. So our survey results, we had two hundred and sixty-one survey responses on this paper survey. Ninety-five point six of the people we asked to do a survey said yes, and they filled it out for us, which really speaks to, that's a really high number. And that really speaks to kind of the atmosphere of our Crane Festival and the mood people are in. Crane viewers are friendly people, willing to be accommodating, fill out a survey. Of those, of those surveys, twelve percent were twelve percent of those responding to the survey were San Luis Valley residents. The other eighty-eight percent were from outside the valley. We had an eighty-nine percent decrease in car count when the cranes were not present, which is the data that we needed to confirm that the reason they're coming is for cranes. And on the car count data, over that thirty-day period, we estimate twenty thousand crane viewers. So again, it's not just Crane Festival, it's the timeframe surrounding that. And you can read some additional details on how this was calculated in the full report if you wanted to. So we had visitors from fifteen different states, but ninety percent of the visitors were from Colorado. And the main, the top five counties were all on the front range, El Paso or the Colorado Springs area, Denver, Arapahoe County, Boulder County, and Jefferson County. So here are the, here's how much money they spent. We had three categories of visitors. We had the local person from the San Luis Valley. We had a visitor, a non-local person who was not spending the night in a motel, and then a visitor from out of the valley who did spend the night in a hotel. And most of them, most of the people, most of our visitors spend nights in hotels. They're here for more than one day. The average spending per day was calculated, and this was based on their self-reporting, like you can see on that survey, how much they spent on gas, how much they spent on food, and how much they spent on lodging and other stuff. So the resulting numbers are three point, roughly three point four million dollars comes in to our valley, to our community, just from people visiting in the spring to see cranes. Of that three point four million dollars, a hundred and eighteen percent, or a hundred and eighteen thousand is total tax revenue. So this is direct economic spending, direct economic influx from crane viewers just in the springtime. So keep in mind, though, that these cranes, they come through twice a year. They come through in March, the spring. That's when we're used to our cranes and our festival, but they also come through in the fall. So this is quite literally money that falls from the sky two times a year. And this is direct spending. Now, often when you see an economic impact study, they extrapolate from this spending into what that means for more dollars. Sometimes you'll see, for every one dollar that comes in, two dollars is generated. You can also, another common way they extrapolate these into larger numbers is to say, well, how many full-time jobs are supported by this, and those people have families that live in this community, and they pay taxes, those sort of things. We did not do any of that extrapolation. But nevertheless, this is three point four million dollars, and it extrapolates to much larger number. So the hotels, one of the questions there was, where did you stay if you stayed in a hotel? Most of our visitors stay in the Alamosa Hotel. Second is Montevista. Third is Del Norte. This is probably reflective of hotel capacity, but it would be wonderful for our town if every hotel room bed in Montevista was occupied before anyone started to go to Alamosa for their lodging. Another part of this survey, I think it was, it's question, it's question fourteen. If there were additional spending opportunities, this is visitors to the Crane Fest, you're taking in the Crane Festival and all we have to offer, if there are more opportunities to spend your money, would you take advantage of them? And it was a resounding yes, and from that information, they extrapolated an additional three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars could be made from visitors attending Crane Festival. And so some examples of additional events are like happy hour, live music, other public land tours. And so this is not, this does not need to be additional activities that the Crane Fest Committee plans for Crane Festival. This is just additional opportunities that our town could provide to these visitors when they're here. The Crane Fest Committee is happy to publicize every, all the neat and unique opportunities our community would like to put together. But we don't feel like we need to plan them. Anyway, there's more money to be made. Three point four million is a really cool, really big number, and there's more money to be made. So on the map, on the graph, or the slide I showed you with the map showing the breeding and the migration track and the wintering grounds, the commonality in all of, and where cranes choose to spend their time is where are their wetlands? Where is their food, water, and shelter? And so the cranes and the prosperity they bring to the valley are heavily intertwined with our other, the other prosperity sources in our valley. They're tied to our agriculture, they're tied to our water, they're tied to the open spaces. So without protecting and supporting those industries, we won't have the cranes either. So our water resources, our private lands, and our ag are very important in this equation. So how do we move forward with this new information of how lucrative this really is? And I think we need to think about Crane Festival as a community-wide thing. We need to think of it as a valley-wide opportunity. We have opportunities for stronger partnerships, I think. The Crane Fest Committee very much values the support that the city gives us, especially Rob Vance and his team putting up the banners, putting up the signs as you enter and exit town. But I think there's opportunities for stronger partnerships on all this. It would be cool if every business and every restaurant involved in our town had a crane special, something that, you know, you just focus on the cranes. That's what people visiting at this time of year are looking for. So, and like I said, we have a lot of expanded visitor opportunities outside of the Crane Fest Committee. And we need to use the advertising force for additional, additional activities. So with that, I'll take any questions if you have any. Is three point four million kind of shocking?
We got twenty-six million last time we met, so that was a bill.
Twenty-six million?
That was mine.
Well, we divided twenty-six by three point four, then, you know, what is that? Ten years of Crane Fest?
How long has Crane Fest been going on?
Good question. Nineteen eighty-three, we did our thirty-eighth annual Crane Fest. Our Crane Fest is the oldest birding festival in the state of Colorado, and it's one of the oldest in the whole nation of a birding festival in the whole nation. We did an online festival this year, so we are proud to say that we've never skipped a year on Crane Fest since nineteen eighty-three. But yeah, oldest birding festival in Colorado for sure.
That's very good.
And we basically don't have to advertise it. Word of mouth, and, you know, when you ask people, how do you know about this? Like, oh, my sister went, my grandparent went, you know? They just, everybody knows about it.
Yeah, that was actually question four on the survey, and word of mouth was the number one source for, how did you hear about it? Yeah, so, you know, when I talk about stronger partnerships and how do we, what do we do to, you know, make more money out of this event? We don't, it's not advertising. We don't need to advertise it. It's already well done. The other thing I would say is, we're not talking about a bigger festival. We're talking about a better festival and more to do with the visitors we already have. Part of the reason that our Crane Festival is unique, and we hear this a lot from our visitors, who, there's a Crane Festival down in Socorro, New Mexico, with the Bosque de la Pechay National Wildlife Refuge, and it's in November. Again, that's where our cranes, our cranes spend the winter. And so it's a week-long event in November, right before Thanksgiving, and that is a massive event. It's very commercialized. They have, like, Olympus cameras sponsors it. You can't do a workshop or a tour for under fifty dollars. You can't do a workshop for under a hundred. And we sell bus tickets for ten, seven.
Seven, about to twelve.
Yeah. And so there's, there's a charm to our festival because of our charming little town, and we don't want to lose that charm. But we, so growing it bigger is not the ask here. It's making it better and giving more people, more things for people to do, the visitors we already have.
Yeah, and I think something that really shows the success of that is the swoop of cranes. Those metal cranes brought people, you know, to Montevista. In fact, today I saw groups of people walking around and looking at the cranes. And, you know, we're kind of in competition for Alamosa, because a lot of people go to Alamosa for restaurants and things. And the swoop of cranes, I think, kept people in Montevista. But one thing we see throughout the years is that our restaurants seem to need support to have the staff to feed people here, you know, and we understand it's hard, that all of a sudden you have this big weekend, you know, and you're trying to feed a whole bunch of new people, and I understand that's hard to bring on the staff and everything, but that's what sends people down to Alamosa instead of keeping them in Montevista, so.
And you have to keep in mind who our visitors are. They're people from the Front Range, who, they might be used to waiting forty-five minutes for a table, but they're not used to waiting forever to get their meal. The other thing is, you know, the activities we have in place, you know, you get back from an evening bus tour, and you can grab some dinner, and then go to the Valley Food Theater for the evening program. So there's, there's a tight schedule of events that people are trying to get fed, getting their meals between those little windows of time. So those are the things of quicker turnaround on dining or more dining opportunities. I mean, maybe the, maybe the farmer's market parking lot could just have four food trucks in it. And, you know, our restaurant owners won't like that idea. Why are you bringing in a food truck when we already have these restaurants? But, you know, the restaurants can promote themselves, have their crane special. There's opportunities. It's not about excluding anyone. It's about making sure these visitors have a great experience. Because honestly, when they're, if it's a Front Range family coming down for Crane Fest, well, then later in the summer, when they're maybe going to Mesa Verde or something, instead of taking the cutoff up on one twelve, up at center, they'll go, oh, let's go into Montevista for lunch, because remember how fun that was in March? So it feeds off of itself if we can, if we can put on a good show.
With the beautiful cranes we display in town, how, how do, like, visitors, do they get an opportunity to purchase those?
Yeah, so there's a lot of confusion that the swoop of the cranes is a Montevista Chamber of Commerce endeavor. It's their idea, and they carry it through. It's not a Crane Fest endeavor. The Chamber is one of our major partners in our, the Crane Fest is the Friends of the Refugees, the City of Montevista, and the Chamber. But that is a Chamber, brilliant Chamber idea that they've carried, carried out, and this is the second year. And yes, they're up from March through September, and you have, and there's the opportunity to bid on them at auction in September, paired with our Potato Festival.
See, and I would make a recommendation, when the people come here for the Crane Fest, that would be one thing that they would want to take home with them, I would think. And that's an advertisement going all throughout the state then. I mean, you know, if somebody displays one of those in their yard, somebody, where'd you get that thing from? Oh, I got it from Montevista. But I wonder, so I wonder why they don't give the people the opportunity that come here for the Crane Fest to have, have the opportunity to maybe buy them that, the time they're here for the Crane Fest.
Well, they, they need to, we want them to be up for long enough for people to appreciate this summer. And I, and they do, you don't have to be present to win. You can bid online. It was an online auction last year, and this is only the second year of it.
Right.
So I think, I think your point is, is good, and I think what people need to know is they have the information on the date, the website, how to bid, everything. All of those details figured out in March, so that it's not just, oh, remember to check back in with us about acquiring one.
Yeah. I mean, if I, to be honest with you, if I were coming here for the Crane Fest, it'd be great if I could buy one of those, take it home with me. I mean, I think it would be a great idea if I could take one home. But that, not have, okay, on my calendar, September, I gotta think about this.
You know what? We could, we could do something like at the Valley Three, the evening of Crane Fest, Saturday. Saturday evening, we have a keynote speaker, and that's where we have our largest audience in one place that's just in full attention. And we could have something like,
Like a silent auction?
We auction one off, or,
Yeah, you display them in a silent auction when they walk out.
Silent auction, and maybe you get to pick which one you want.
So maybe, maybe add extra flavor of the festival.
Do you like a smaller version?
People are coming to order, they're walking.
Yeah, that's a good idea. But, and so when I went to, I was at the Montevista Chamber meeting the other day, and I was, we were talking about possible gimmicks to get people to do the Walk of the Cranes. And, you know, one gimmick would be like there's a scavenger hunt element, and you go to each one, and there's something hidden in each one, and, you know, you put it all together, and there's a message, or I don't know. There's opportunities to, you know, coerce people into, it doesn't take much, because people are already walking around and see them all.
But the crane sweep gets people to stop
Yes.
that are just driving through. So that's why we don't want to take them off of the poles until
Yeah.
September, because people will, they're planning on driving straight through Montevista, but what is all this, and they stop?
Maybe something in combination then, you know, have some available during a silent auction during the event. So those people, you know, again, there's an advertisement going all over the state. They take one of those home and display it in the front yard, and go, where'd you get that?
Well, it could even be as simple as, you see, when, you look at last year's crane sales, and which one went for the most money, and you grab the artist who did that and commission them to do a special one that's just for auction. And, yeah, a silent auction, that'd be kind of fun, a real live auction.
And in the last couple of years, we've developed more merchandise, t-shirts, stickers, things like that for people to take away with them to say, Crane Fest.
Yeah, you mentioned a mini one. You could just have a little pin.
A pin, yeah.
That would be really, get one modeled after. Yeah. Anyway, there's a lot of opportunities. There's a lot of great ideas out there, and there's a lot of money to be made. There really is. And, and we're totally just, just brushing over opportunities in the fall. So in the fall, the cranes are here. They're not here, they're not as concentrated as they are in the, in the spring. So in the spring, you can go down to the refuge where they provide wetlands for them to roost. And in the spring, there's also grain fields. So the refuge grows grain. In the fall, they do not harvest it. They leave it standing so that it's available for the cranes to eat in the spring. So when spring comes, they mow that grain down, and the cranes are in there eating. And so your cranes roost on the refuge, they feed on the refuge, and they go back and, they just go back and forth, back and forth, and our visitors position themselves so they can see a field with five thousand cranes in it. But in the fall, the valley is full of residual grain, because harvest has just happened. But the same twenty to twenty-five thousand cranes are here. They're just more spread out. But that doesn't mean we can't, you know, create a crane tour, that it's just you swing by the Chamber office and pick up them out. And it's a self-guided crane tour. There's lots of opportunities.
Yeah, so anything that the city can do, I think, to help and piggyback on what we are doing would be really wonderful, and hopefully you see the benefit of that festival, of what it's doing for the city. And I want to say real quick, while we're here, I want to say thank you to the city and thank you to Rob Vance for supporting. and thank you to Rob Vance for supporting us in building a parking lot down at the Eight South, the Co-op Road in one of our pullouts. As Jenny said, we're on the Crane, but we're also on the Crane Festival Committee. But we're also members of the Board of the Friends of the San Luis Valley National Wildlife Refugees. And the refuge manager came to us, what, a year and a half ago? And said, would you help me build a parking lot there on Eight South? Because, you know, like we said, we haven't really grown the festival, but the people coming down to see it are really increasing. And it's become a traffic problem on Eight South there that, you know, our parking lot there got full and people are slowing down and, you know.
We got buses.
Carers going and, yeah.
Buses with forty people unloading.
Unloading it.
Which is long to the Eight South. And, and then you have our farmers and ranchers and all our residents who are used to going sixty-five or more.
Yeah.
And it was, it was.
Problem. So Suzanne came to us because we can apply for grants that she can't apply for. So we applied for a grant and actually we rewarded the grant. And once we were awarded the grant, I started calling around to see who all could help us out with that. The county, Rio Grande County did a huge project to lay the base for the parking lot for us. And then we started looking at what else we could do. We bought some gravel and that was a little bit over our budget. So we contacted Rob and said, you know, can the city help out? And you guys came down and helped us kind of finish some of that preparation. And we got it done. So I don't know if anybody's been down there, but it's a gorgeous parking lot. You could play. You're okay in it now and it's not full of cars. Hopefully the kids won't do.
And we'll have, we'll have additional, there are different additional phases to that effort. There's going to be a pathway. So now the, the little horseshoe driveway will be closed to vehicle traffic during peak times. And people just walk over and there'll be picnic benches and a bathroom.
A bathroom, bathroom.
Some kiosk with some interpretive information. So, yeah.
Yeah, so thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a real community effort.
So, anyway, uh, next year's Crane Festival is, I think, March eleventh, twelve and thirteen. We'll confirm that in twenty twenty-two. So we have loads of time to figure out if we want to embrace this more and take advantage of, of this. Like I said, money falls from the sky twice a year in the form of Sand Hill Crane.
Well, it's gonna be really nice to have it in the new facility.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. And you know what? I really feel like we got super lucky. We got lucky that we pulled off our twenty twenty, um, festival before COVID hit. We got lucky that, um, having to come up with a different plan for Crane Fest overlapped with Sky High being under construction. What was our third lucky thing? There was one more. Anyway, really fortunate timing. So we can be back up in person and better than ever next year.
We're good, but we have time to work on this.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It was very good. Thank you, thank you both. Mr. Vance?
Light there, do you leave the council?
He's leaving.
That's very nice. I'm gonna bring to you tonight something that's been in the works. So part of our one cent funding, we decided to put towards a sidewalk replacement program. And tonight in front of you is that program. Kind of stole some of it from Alamosa. I want to put a shout out to Harry and his crew over in Alamosa. They did most of the legwork and I just kind of stole it, so. But it's a good program. This will be our first year, so we'll see how it goes. And if you don't mind, I'll just kind of read it so the public can hear about it. Montevista Concrete Replacement Program. The concrete replacement program is intended to assist homeowners and business owners within the city of Montevista in replacing curb gutter and sidewalk in the rights of ways to improve pedestrian safety and correct drainage problems. Under this program, the city will pay for one half of the cost of the forming and placing of the concrete. The property owner will be responsible for the other half. The old concrete will be removed by the city at no cost to the property owner. And it is the responsibility of the property owner to restore and reseed any lawn areas disturbed during construction. The city will correct any damage done to sprinkler systems during the construction aspect. The amount of funds available for this program each year are limited. This year, we're gonna put five thousand dollars towards that project. In order to participate, the property owners must submit a, a request to participate to the Public Works Department no later than May tenth of the year in which the work is to be completed. The request should include a rough sketch of the property, which shows of the work that wants to be done by May thirty-first. The city will provide an estimate of the cost for the work broken down by that portion to be paid by the property owner and that portion paid by the city. These estimates will be within ten percent of the final costs. If there is an increase in final cost in the excess of ten percent, it will be absorbed by the city. The property owner must submit a down payment in the amount of fifty percent of their share of the cost within seven days of receipt of the estimate if they want the work done. The city will then bid out the work, award the contract for construction and ensure that the work is done properly. Once the construction is complete, the property owner will receive a bill for the remainder of the portion of the work. Final payment will be due within thirty days of receipts unless other arrangements were made when they were enrolling in the program. For new sidewalks, while this program is intended primarily for the replacement of deteriorated curb gutter and sidewalk, property owners in previously developed areas of the city, those who want to install sidewalk in an area that does not currently have one may participate only when the funds are available. So we really want to kind of address our existing sidewalks, the areas that are either crumbling, the curb gutters, sidewalks that have been pushed up by tree limbs and stuff like that. So the way I'm envisioning this this year is I'll get as many applicants as we can get between now and middle part of May. And we'll then go out to, and put it out to bid for total square footage, get some contractors to come in, give us a cost. And then I'll break that down based on the footages and give each property owner what their cost of that will be or their share. And we'll see where we are at five percent. Cause I have had a few people, um, that's contacted me about putting in new sidewalk. So if there's funds available, we can look at doing that too, so. And the application is on your packet. Excuse me. I'll make sure that we have that within the next week, have it up on the website. Make sure it gets out to everybody and maybe I'll give a CD copy of it. So with that, any questions that council may have? I don't think we need a formal resolution, but if you guys are good with the program as presented, kind of need a handshake to go ahead and move forward with it.
Can you apply for somebody else?
Yeah.
Some other neighbor and make them pay for it? Got some eaten sidewalks right there along one sixty really need to be replaced.
I think, you know, being the first year, I really think that it'll be fairly short the first year. But as people see coming in, new sidewalk, word of mouth will get out. Some neighbors and some neighbors won't. But the nice thing is, is that's something new as a council can then decide if there are, and we have leftover funds, maybe it is an area where we tackle some of these other places that aren't getting the attention. You know, so.
I'll give my application to you soon because my sidewalk needs to.
Okay. And believe it or not, I actually have one already in the file.
For me?
No.
Oh.
I just wondered if he's over here, you know?
No, no, I haven't. When I was first talking about this, a gentleman called me and he said he wants to do it and he's anxious. And as soon as I had this developed and ready to go, I gave him a call and I said, I think I'm ready. You wanna come look at it? He's like, I'll be at City Hall and filled it out right there and signed it the same day. He wants his sidewalk done, so it'll be good. So I'm thinking it should be a good project. Everybody, council.
Yeah. Move forward. It's a good idea. I got a driveway that needs some help.
There is a few.
Right off the, right off the street.
And that's why we, that's why we put curb and gutter in here too. Cause there's a lot of curb and gutter that needs some attention. And so this gives us an opportunity to get some of this stuff fixed.
Six foot chunk of curb that's just falling apart.
That's cool.
Sounds like we need a few applications.
Got a few.
I saw the application on the minutes of the meeting. I think they probably. Okay. Citizen comments. City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this thing meeting.
Hey Jennifer, you remember the thing we talked about? Do you mind if I, or you already addressed that?
Um, you're welcome to, you're welcome to talk to it and introduce the idea, but council can't take action on that and formally give a nod on it.
I understand. I just wanted to, anyways, if it's all right.
Be sure and write your name on that paper up there, please.
John Doe, is that fine? Just real quick. My name's Dennis. I'm part of the One Cent Committee. And I spoke with Jennifer briefly about, you know, the recommending that we get possibly one or two, um, students from Montevista High School to become part of the One Cent Committee. So we get to divert, and I think that's gonna help with diversity on that committee. We need, we need to get, you know, a greater amount of people from, and a diverse amount, more amount on that committee. And that would be a great opportunity for these students at the high school to get involved in government and see what's going on in this city and give, give their recommendations. Because they are in fact the future of Montevista, these, these young kids that are attending high school. So briefly, that's all I read. Jennifer and I briefly talked about it. And I, I know it'll be brought up in the future, but looking at bringing on, you know, maybe a, a couple of high school students that would be interested in being part of that committee. So we can get feedback from the younger generation in this town that are gonna be the future of Montevista. And that's, that's just a, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Pega? Right. Staff proposals, reports and actions. Public works.
That would be me again.
Popular rant tonight.
Yes.
All right, let's do this again. So, um, tonight, since I didn't give you guys a, a, a report at the last council meeting, um, figured I'd go ahead and do this one. So a couple of things that are noteworthy. We went ahead and we've been doing some, I guess, call it pre-cleanup for summer. So all the crews, streets, parks and utilities have really been trying to work on getting things ready for summer. We're gonna have a very busy summer this month or this year. I wish it was just one month long, but. So we're doing some pothole patching. We got some sweeping operations going on. I'm gonna have to kind of concentrate that a little more than what we did last year. We've got a lot of buildup on the streets. So we're gonna hit that a little harder than we did last year and see if we can keep. Hopefully the sweeper will stay up and running. So, um, we're getting more and more people being, using the parks. So we are opening bathrooms this year. We didn't open any of our restrooms last year. We've already opened the restroom here at Chapman. And we'll be opening the one here at the Memorial here in another week or two. The one at Chapman, we opened and I won't steal anybody's thunder. But we opened that really because this weekend on Saturday, the PD and Farmers Insurance are going to be hosting a Easter egg hunt for the young folks in the community. So we went ahead and got things ready and gonna have that open. I'm also going to have my, one of my staff members work at that event. I think there'll be enough that we need to make sure we keep the trash, keep the bathrooms clean cause little kids need to go to the bathroom when they get all those eggs. So we're gonna kind of do that. So we'll have a little overtime for that event. That'll be officially the first event in a little over a year that I've actually put staff towards working. So that's a good thing. So we're good for that, feeling a little more like normal. So a lot of projects, I've been just really inundated with the airport. We received another CARES grant for the, for the airport. We got good news on our project at the airport. Stimulus from the federal government came in. And normally the way the projects work at the airport is ninety percent Feds, FAA, five percent state funds and five percent local funds. This year, the feds are going to go ahead and fund our project one hundred percent. So that freed up five percent of our airport funds. And we worked with the state. And we were able to go ahead and get on the list to do a fuel farm. So we're gonna work on getting a new fuel farm out there, which will actually benefit not only the users, but also the ag folks that are out there spraying. So we're gonna try to get all that done. If not, the next window for a fuel farm isn't for another six years. It's discretionary funds from the state. So with this bump, we're able to combine everything in, in the state felt. We, we advertised enough on our project. But they felt there was a good need for it, so they went ahead and did that. So that's a good thing. We are running into a little bit of a snag with the FAA on our project. They're having some struggles with things not being in their book as far as like mastic repair. That's not a term that they use, so we're, we're going through the steps. We're gonna have to do a request for modifications. So we're going through the steps. It has to go all the way up to Washington. It can't be decided locally. It has to go all the way up to the actual Federal Aviation Administration in Washington DC. So we're gonna wait for that. And unfortunately, that's a process. So we'll see how that comes about. Other things, Terra de Sol filing number two started this week. That is a brand new subdivision going in. If you're familiar with Terra de Sol off of Sixth Avenue. They're gonna be building from Ninth down to Eleventh Street. It's another fifty-seven units that are going in. So it's a very large subdivision. We spent the week out there. ACI has been verifying that there are indeed water and sewer taps to each of the lots. They got to do some repairs over the years. Some of those taps have been damaged and stuff. And Bob and I met out there today with them and walked them through. And they have some repairs that they have to do, so we'll get that going. And then probably within the next two weeks, they're gonna start clearing and grubbing and getting the, getting the roads ready for actual putting asphalt down. So, um, gonna move pretty good. And we're gonna try really hard to move right from that project. Since ACI is in town, we're gonna hopefully keep them in town and move them over to our street project over on Bronx this year. We're going through the engineering right now. We had to do a little modification. Bronx is extremely flat. So in order to avoid having pooling and water pooling in front of people's property like it does now, and making it even worse when we put an impervious service on there, we're gonna go ahead and authorize them to go ahead and do another survey. They're gonna go ahead and put a storm drain. So we're gonna actually add, put a storm drain in and do that. Should change the budget. I have some funding in the storm drain that I was gonna use for something else. But we'll just modify that over to that project and get that project done nicely. So there's actually a drain. So the residents over on Bronx, I think they'll be happy with that. Still twenty-four foot wide pavement. Other things that have done, we participated. And I wanted to thank Devon, those guys for thanking us. We do all kinds of little things for the community that sometimes I let council know about and a lot of times I don't. That was one of them. They, they were running into some shortages on their grant and they needed some help. And it was something we could do with our staff and didn't really cost us anything other than staff time. So I went ahead and volunteered our guys to go down and we hauled for a day, hauled gravel for them. So, and that cut the cost so they could actually get their grant and get the project done. So it's a good win-win for the community, good win-win for us. So I appreciate what they did for us tonight. So, um, we did a property cleanup on Franklin. I'm sure Chief's gonna talk more about that. It was a really good project. Um, wanna commend Manuel Lopez, the, the code enforcement officer. That was his first big project. He did a very nice job. I think he stressed a lot on that, but he did very nice. It was a good project. Um, so, going into that, we, Forrest and I also met with, um, Rio Grande Bank, uh, the superintendent of the schools and the optimistics today to talk about downtown cleanup and kinda worked through some things. We're the school district and I'm gonna let Forrest kinda go more into detail on that because I'm sure that's something he'd like to talk about. Um, but it's basically where the school's gonna adopt our downtown area and keep it clean. And we're going to, as Public Works, we'll assist them with that, but I'll let Forrest, when he's back, I'll let him get into the, the, the more details. But another positive for downtown, another positive for, for our community. Um, and with that, question for you guys. Do you wanna have cleanup day this year? Sorry. So, um, they're planning on doing Pirate Pride either May third or fourth. And we usually try to do our citywide cleanup day that same week. So, would council want us to do that? We did not do one last year.
I think it would be good.
My opinion.
The timing is great. Cinko Day was right after the, the schools were doing it.
Well, we're, that's what we tried to do today is kinda schedule it so
Right.
the city, the downtown looks its best for this celebration. So, we usually try to do that. It's gonna put a lot of work on our staff, but we can do that, that Friday and Saturday like we normally do.
And this will be where waste management holds it.
If I can get it all ready. So, yeah. So I have a lot of late work to do between now and then, yeah. That's what we'll shoot for.
And so what was the date again?
The fifth and sixth, I believe it is.
For May and May?
Yeah, the Friday, Friday and Saturday in May.
After Cinco Day, my own?
Yeah.
So it's the eighth and the ninth?
Friday, the seventh.
Seven.
Oh, sorry, seventh and eighth.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Cause the third, fourth is Monday, Tuesday. Cinco is on
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah. All right, um, so we'll go ahead and plan for that and then I open it up for any questions you might have with us.
One question I have for you, Rob, is when we had that special meeting, sort of work session earlier evening, is Element gonna be back where we can?
April thirteenth, we're gonna have a work session with them where they're going to address specifically the wastewater project. So you as council will get a lot better. I will warn you, that meeting is going to supply you with a ton of information, okay? The project is extremely complicated. Um, Nick is probably gonna dive into the weeds a little bit on there. So be perfectly comfortable having him stop and giving, backing up and giving you guys the information you really need. Okay, cause he'll throw some engineering terms out there after you. So, okay?
Okay.
But, yeah, we're, I told him, let's get down, um, could be scared you the last time with that price tag. Um, now you need to understand the why. Why do we need to do that?
We need to get down to the polished.
Yes, the polished weeds.
Not the community cleanup day. What, what does that entail? What do you mean?
So, in the past, when we do a citywide cleanup day, we open, um, this year we'll probably have to open the parking lot there. It's bad. And Waste Management has been gracious enough every year to supply a whole bunch of dumpsters and drivers. And then the landfill provides us with some free dump services. They allow, you know, four or five free dumps of forty yard roll-offs. And citizens come in, I have my entire staff there on hand and we unload for them. They can bring anything that's acceptable at the landfill. If they can bring, we will take and then dispose of it. And it gives the people an opportunity to clean their yards, any stuff that they have in their house. We can't take like batteries and electronics and things that people can't take at the landfill. But if it's acceptable at the landfill, then we'll take those.
Okay. Well, then two other questions. Where would things like that go if you wanted to get rid of that? And do you need volunteers as well?
I would love to have volunteers. Um, I've never had volunteers. It's always been my staff that does it on our time. Um, so, yeah, if we could get some volunteers, that's great because it is a long two days.
What, what, what do you need volunteers to do?
Help unload.
Help unload.
That would be the big thing. Help unload, direct traffic. Um, every year since we haven't done it in a year, I would expect that this year, the first opening, um, the first year we did it, it's the first year we did it when I was here, we actually had a line that came out of Public Works down Sky Trail in both directions uncharming.
You're talking about helping, helping citizens unload their vehicles?
Right, right. Cause you'll get people, yep. Um, and we've, you know, we've sent our truck out every once in a while to help some of the elderly, people that don't have the vehicle to get rid of the stuff they need, um, much like today's project that we did over on Franklin. Um, yeah, we try to help the community. It's part of Pirate Pride Day. Pirate Pride, if you don't know, is when the high school shuts down for a day and all of the students go out into the community and they do community service. Um, you know, they, they clean up cemeteries. This year they're gonna concentrate on our downtown. Um, they just, they picked residents that have trouble maintaining their own yard and, and the young men and women go out and they take care of those people's yards and, and actually learn what community service actually is. So it's a good program. Really proud that the high school does it. I think it's a great thing, so.
So you need volunteers not only to help unload and direct traffic, you could use pickup truck owners to
Sure, sure. If there's people that have pickups that have mine and help, yep.
To go. Okay.
That would be, that would be a new thing, um, counselor, that we have not really had a whole lot. We could advertise that if we had some, you know, three or four volunteers and they could maybe go help.
And that would, people would just call Public Works and say, I need somebody to come pick my stuff up and
Yeah, then we can send some stuff out, yeah.
So where do we take electronics, batteries, and things?
Usually WSB in Alamosa is the only one that I know that has a recycling center. Um, um, so you have to check with them at all the rates. Um, sometimes you'll see it where they posted in the papers that they're having a community, where they're collecting that stuff. They're in Alamosa, so look, look at the papers. You guys publish that when they do that, so.
I'm not sure, but maybe.
Let's say it's in the paper.
Okay. Could we get them to go in us?
I can talk to them. I can tell them to talk to them.
Just of my, uh. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? All right, thank you. Appreciate it, Rob.
Mika? You need to come in here with a cape. You're a superhero.
My blue is bright enough today. Um, good evening. So, I haven't been here in quite a while, I feel like. I didn't know the last time I was here, so I figured it's probably best to show it so you know I'm still alive. I survived while not just I, myself and our staff survived our eight-month twenty-twenty summer. That's what we're calling it. From June twenty-second until March, oh, I don't even know what the day was because spring break started March fifteenth and that was more important than the last day of, of the full day, uh, school program. Um, but running a full program where we had about eighty kids throughout the day in four different programs that we ran throughout the day for the school program to assist the school district with their third through fifth grade cohorts that went the fifty percent AM and fifty percent PM. So we have four different programs helping with that. Um, so, spring break was the fifteenth on the twenty-second. So from, I guess, June twenty-second to March twen- June twenty-second of twenty-twenty and to March twenty-second of twenty-twenty-one, we, um, worked ten-hour days to make it through to be here today, I guess. I don't even have words anymore. I'm still trying to catch up and process and understand everything and fall back into just an after-school program right now. So the school district is back in-person learning a hundred percent, so we are just an after-school program. Um, we will begin operating on Fridays. Um, we're, we've held off on that. Our first Friday with kids will actually be next Friday and then we're gonna do every other Friday at first just to get back in the swing of things. Um, I'm still keeping, uh, enrollment numbers sort of low because right now we're seeing sixty-five kids every day after school and it's a set sixty-five, so they're guaranteed to be there. Um, every kid that have had, enrolled in the program since the beginning of, or since, yeah, the beginning of a school year has attended every day. So, um, we're seeing sixty-five every day after school. It's nice now because we can spend a little bit more time outside, um, since we have some sunshine, but that could change tomorrow, so. Other than that, that's really I, all we have going on is just trying to get back into the swing of things. Um, only seeing kids for after-school and then trying to figure out how to function as an adult without children all day the rest of the day so that the after-school program is successful. Today was a complete mess though, just because of the amazing day that it is and the universe has been playing tricks on me all day long. And then we had some kids, somehow they made it through the school day with an entire bottle of shaving cream and it ended up at Kids Connection all over my hallway. So much fun. And they were like, it's a prank, but I just didn't understand. They don't, they don't understand pranks like at all, but it was a fun cleanup. They thought they'd get away with just running out the door and not cleaning it up, but I was like, ha, 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 jinx on you. So that's really all I have going on. I don't have much else to catch you guys up with. Just kids, kids, and more kids.
Thank you. You guys really did a great job too on that last year. So, thank you, your whole crew.
Yeah, it was mainly my crew. I just have to keep them sane and keep myself sane enough to continue what I'm doing.
I'm like a sincere thank you, um, just because I'm positive that there's parents out there that don't get the chance to tell you guys thank you. It, it is important for the kids to be safe.
Yeah. Kind of place where they can just be kids.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Uh, so you remember last time my assistant Kim was here to give my report? So I'm just gonna add in, sorry that I didn't have nothing in writing for you and your package. Uh, I'm just gonna touch a little bit over the last report and what we did from there to now. Uh, we did hosted our, uh, youth basketball camp at Sargent on April, no, April. March twelfth through the fourteenth, we had a total of about forty kids that day. Um, we did host a men's basketball tournament just last weekend, I believe, March twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. We had, we only accepted nine teams because of, uh, gym space again and we didn't have that many officials and, uh, so if we accepted more, we had to run two, two gyms and it was just gonna be more personnel. We have to pay or hire. And, uh, so we end up taking nine teams out of thirteen that wanted to sign up, which everybody was ready to play. We was ready to get out there. It was very exciting to be out there and they want us to do that every weekend, which I was like, no, no, that's not gonna happen. But, uh, you know, it was good, uh, to get out there again and see people running and, and kids running and, and, you know, every time that we had a chance through the pandemic of twenty-twenty, we were in the gym. And, you know, all those times that we had those camps or we had anything going on, uh, I just wanna say that again, that we had no issues with anybody getting sick or anybody coming back and saying that we got sick during those times. Uh, we had no problems whatsoever. Um, we, as we're reopening, uh, there's a, a proposal that I put out for Forrest. I'm not gonna mention much of it because we're gonna talk about it. But just kinda as a head department kinda preparing for the summer, we know it's gonna be a busy time. And so we're just kinda looking forward to what's coming and we wanna be ready for it. Uh, especially now that we're reopening, uh, with the new facility, uh, everything, you know, we just wanna be ready for whatever comes. And so you might be seeing that maybe next meeting or so, if, if it's approved through them to come to you. Um, we are planning a, like Robert mentioned, and I think Chief's gonna talk more about it, we're working with them. Uh, the, the recreation department's gonna have, have a couple of games set up for the kids, uh, uh, Easter egg this weekend. Um, it was something that Chief called me and said, if you wanna be involved, come along. And we took the chance and we're going and we appreciate that. I think it's gonna be fun. Uh, we're also planning, uh, a youth, well, we're planning an adult basketball tournament for women now. The last one was for men. This one's gonna be women. And that's gonna be, um, April tenth, it's gonna be just on Saturday. Uh, we're, we're thinking maybe about six to eight teams. Uh, we haven't really, we just opened it this week, so people are already calling to register. And then after that, we're planning to have a youth, uh, twelve-and-under basketball tournament. Um, and then just keep things going. Right now, we just opened a youth, excuse me, it's been a dry day. Uh, we just opened, uh, youth soccer registrations, uh, I wanna say Monday. And we will start with games on the nineteenth, uh, of April. And that will go through May, mid-May and then right after that, we'll start with, uh, youth baseball. And just getting back in track from, you know, our normal schedules before twenty-twenty. So, uh, again, we're glad that we're getting back into that and just preparing for that. Um, let me see. Uh, there's a couple grants that we are applying for, uh, enough men, uh, kind of Forrest mentioned already, but, uh, we are working with Kaboom, uh, to apply enough for a new playground, uh, our Sanchez Park. And that one is going good so far. Uh, we will be having a meeting, uh, I'm thinking Monday. I was talking to Anita today about maybe setting up a Zoom meeting for that. Uh, just, uh, we wanna see kind of a community involvement. So we contacted a few people that are highly involved in the community and so they will be in the meeting. And, uh, we're, I don't wanna say a hundred percent sure that we're gonna get it, but it looks pretty promising. So I'm very excited about that. Uh, and then just recently, we just been working with SLB Go on a big grant. Uh, it's called the Rosalian Park Access Grant. And that's from three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars that we get in the period of five years, I believe. And, uh, what we're planning is like a master plan for different projects that we have in mind here in the city. Uh, one is the dog park, uh, the other one is the bike park that Robert's been working on. And then other, other trucks, uh, walking trucks or bike trucks that, the, SLB is being wanted to bring into the community, so. Uh, we just started to, uh, applying for the grants, so we don't know how successful that is, but they believe that is, that we have a good chance of getting some of it, if not all of it, so. So those will be a good, big, uh, projects that we've been working on, other than So those will be a good, big, uh, projects that we've been working on, other than reopening, getting ready for the summer. Um, and since last year, since we started the project out there, can't wait for the facility to be ready so we can start hosting and hosting and hosting. So, that is all I have in my report, I have, so we, we just kinda getting back in track on, on, uh, our schedule and normal schedule and, uh, take it as, like, as it comes, so. Uh, if you guys have any questions for me, yeah, or anything, that I can answer.
That's great, everything you're doing, I thought you were good.
Thank you.
Thanks, I mean.
Thank you, ask.
Appreciate it.
Council committee, city commission, and council reports.
I really don't have anything today, just to look out for your neighbors, um, keep your eyes open. Summer's coming around, so people are getting out there, so.
Thank you, Victor. I have nothing to report, but for those who wish to, uh, hang out after the meeting, I would like to do a group phone call to Counselor Johnson and be fun to have a bunch of people on there and wish them well.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Uh, I'm seeing a lot more, uh, events coming up, I'm seeing a lot of people walking the sidewalks, I'm excited about. And of course, they're walking the sidewalks, you know, looking at the light bulbs, no, they're looking at the cranes. And, and they stand there and you can watch their hand movements, and they're, I mean, they're analyzing each one like there are critics, maybe they are. Um, you know, but it's great to see that out there, um, a couple of businesses have reported a, you know, a little increase in foot traffic. Changed their hours around a little bit, even more open on the weekends, and they're having a little more foot traffic, so that's good. A few more customers, tourists are coming in. I live right on First Avenue, so I see them coming in every day, they're coming. So, um, the weather's getting better, and I just think a lot of this is in for some, a, a really great summer this year. And, uh, that's about all I've got.
Very good.
Did I forget anything? Mm, good.
You're asking me. You're asking me.
I'm asking, whoever, you're supposed to be responsible or not, I need that.
Was there anything for the chamber, I mean, you mentioned anything chamber, you usually mention something chambers?
Um, you know, there's some stuff going on there, and, and we're just trying to work through some things right now, and, and when we get that worked through, there'll be a, a chamber report.
Very good. I really don't have much, um, other than it is farming season, so everybody, please be safe out there driving around. Um, I was lucky enough to go out in the country yesterday and watch three vehicles run stop sign right in front of me, so. Pay attention to what's going on around you, so be safe. So with that, we will adjourn the meeting to.
It is April fifteenth, sorry.
Adjourn the meeting, recess the meeting to April fifteenth.